I'm going to call to order the August 7th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency, and Financing Authority. We're going to begin as we do each week with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight is going to be led by Ms. Cheyenne Daniel.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Ledesma will not be joining us this evening due to a work obligation. The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with Local 39 and with Local 522, and no action was taken, and to confer with our legal counsel regarding one matter of litigation, the case, the City of West Sacramento versus Springfield case, it's noted in our printed agenda. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. City Attorney. All right, with that, we're going to proceed to Item 1A, which is Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda but Within the Jurisdiction of the City Council. As is noted on our printed agenda, state law prohibits the council from having a discussion or taking action on items that are brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone that wishes to address the council on this or any other item tonight to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door, and to turn that into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all the comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which agenda item is currently being considered. The clerk accepts the speaking request card all the way to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report is complete and the public testimony has begun and the council questions and discussions, she doesn't take any additional cards, so if you're here on a particular agenda item, please be sure to get the request in as soon as you can, but definitely before the conclusion of the staff report. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can present various forms of anxiety, and so that we ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or applause or other demonstrations, and we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have a few requests to speak under Item 1A, and the first one is by Forest Gardens. Welcome.
Hi, thanks. So, the thing is, with the news that's going on nowadays, there are these mass shootings that are happening all over the place. And the thing is, is that in 1989, a West Sacramento man from here drove all the way down to Stockton to my elementary school, where they killed five kids and 32 else were wounded. Then at the City of Parkland last year, there were 17 kids that were also killed in their classrooms. This is what it sounded like. At 2:00 in the afternoon, gunshots ringing. So, gunshots are ringing out in our cities all across America. And the thing is, that gentleman and some of the gentlemen behind me are our first line of defense when it comes to this sort of thing. I really want our police officers to be saturated with anything and everything that they need to make sure that we're protected here, because these things happen in the blink of an eye, whether it's at Walmart. Walmart, there was 22 dead and 22 dead and 24 wounded in a matter of 20 seconds. Gilroy, just here in California, 3 dead, 12 injured. Dayton, Ohio, 9 dead, 27 injured. These things are happening in every city across the town, across the United States. And the thing is, is that it seems like, it seems like maybe our law enforcement doesn't have the staff that they need because we're growing so quickly and so fast. And I'm just hoping that if you guys have a moment to maybe take a look at the ratio, because I think what's really concerned me is, on some of the mobile, on some of the media, social media boards, some people are resulting to vigilanteism. I mean, they're literally packing weapons even though they've been arrested 15 times because they can't get a concealed carry permit from the Yellow County Sheriff's Office. And then we have some people saying, well, let's just give good guys guns. And so when these officers, and these fine officers, arrive in a scene, who do they know who's the bad guy? Who do they know who's the good guy? And we're just living in this day and age where I just think that we need to give West SacPD everything and anything that they need, down to a blank check. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Pat Flint.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'd like to address the LAFCO meeting that happened on July 25th. Of course, I'm upset with the decision that they made. I'm upset that the city went out to overtake the reclamation districts at this time, and I want to read some of the reasons why. Our natural water systems, canals, sloughs, wetlands, and Lake Washington are being replaced with detention ponds. RD 537 and 900 have managed this system for over 100 years successfully. I do not trust that the City of West Sacramento is in a position, nor prepared, to take over control of our flood protection at this time. I do not trust that they have the expertise nor the liability issues solved to be successful. Cost savings are minimal at best. They did not approve, prove otherwise in their report. The grand jury report is completely being ignored by both this body and the LAFCO body. I do not trust that the city will keep flood protection funding separate for the sole use of flood protection, as seen by the experience I have observed with your port, land holdings, and fundings. The city does not have a plan in place to ensure evacuation of residents in case of catastrophic event, such as a levee breach or dam failure. They have stated that we are on our own, or you have stated that. The city has no written plan and assurances to the public that will keep us safe and funding in place for flood protection. You've already missed two funding cycles. Now, I'm not only blaming you, I'm blaming anybody that is involved with the flood protection funding when you go back to Washington, D.C. But you are a big part of successfully getting it in the past. I don't know why the last two years have been not successful. And Mr. Mitchell, you, in your opinion, recommended during the time when the City Council was discussing the reclamation districts takeover, went into closed session during a discussion of liability, yet you had no problem discussing possible liability situations and found the LAFCO board publicly. So those are some of my concerns. I could go on and on, but I don't want to waste your time, because you don't listen anyway, except for Martha. I'll give you credit for that, because I appreciate all that you do for this community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Danny Lightford.
Have to raise it just a little bit after she speaks.
That's as far.
Good evening. First, I'd like to comment about the 2x2 that happened last night. My husband attended, because I couldn't be there, and I don't understand how you can start without a quorum, especially since there were no school board members there. There was only the superintendent when the meeting was started. I also, too, want to address the LAFCO meeting. As I was there, and I am not a morning person, but I got up for that one, it appeared as though the LAFCO members had already made up their decisions. It was obvious that some of them had already pre-written their comments, and it's disturbing, because they don't even live in this community. And you yourself, Mr. Mayor, left before public comments, most of the public comments were even made, and that, to me, is frustrating. I find it frustrating that these gentlemen say how wonderful and how much they trust you as a council, and I'm sorry, but me as a resident, being that none of them live here, I don't trust you with the levee issues. And I hate saying that. But I was here when Katrina hit. I live within a half mile of the levee situation. I watched RD 900 Nurse Boils all night long during that time. I came before this council. I spoke about that when they found out that Katrina's, the erosion under their levees is what compromised their levees, not the water toppling over the top from the hurricane. I spoke to that, and only the mayor was on the council at the time. You were on the planning commission. And I was belittled, I was ridiculed by the mayor and some of the people that closely surround him, as to, I was calling, "The levees are falling, the levees are falling," like Chicken Little would say, which it was actually Henny Penny that said that kind of stuff. And that's what we get when we come with our concerns. I was at the safety meeting that Ms. Flint talked about. We were told, "We're on our own. Best thing, get to the overpass on the freeway." I'm sorry, when that water hits, and I don't want to be in a car stuck in traffic trying to get on an overpass to the freeway. I'm fortunate, I have really high peaks, and I have a really high attic, but my 85-year-old neighbor doesn't. So do I need to go get her a full levee? These are the concerns we have. When people have come to this council before, we've been ridiculed, not listened to. I do have a problem with the city being so focused on trails and bike paths and those kind of things. I don't want to see that money for our levee system, our protection. I want to be able to sleep at night. I don't want to see that money get wasted on trails or bike things. Amenities are nice, but we need to be safe before that. We need to have assurances that you guys have our backs. I know that none of us want a catastrophic event, but I would hate for a catastrophic event to be the defining matter to say, "Gosh, we should have listened to the community that spoke before." We should have been more concerned about their concerns than about what we want. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So that's all the comments we have under Item 1A. So we're going to proceed to Item 1B, which is Council Communications. So are there any reports from members of the council from their assigned committees or other acts officially representing the city? Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes. Last month, I joined the Sacramento Valley Division members, where we voted in council members Tom Stoller as president and Gloria Partita as secretary. So we have our new officers. We received PG&E training on the training facility with Assembly Member Aguirre Curry, and she was a significant resource in getting that established as a city council member. We also received a briefing on Poota Creek by a streamkeeper. Thought that was pretty interesting to see how, you know, they have cultivated this creek and all the work that they're doing to preserve it, and how Berriessa Winery holds a key to all the wineries with their grapevine root stock, which is grown in the Martinez Orchards, and met with a family member there. I also attended the Fire, the Youth Fire Academy graduation on July 29th, and thank you for their invitation, and was impressed with the leadership provided by firefighter Jen Amagir and engineer Ryan DePape, who led our youth to learn about the firefighting profession. It seems like we have some interested future firefighters growing in our midst, in our city. And it shows that, you know, through the video I saw, their dedication and hard work to train our future firefighters. In addition, I was able to attend the Sacramento Fire Academy graduation and welcomed our new firefighters on our team, Davis and Grayden and Brian King. And this last month, I attended West SacPD's outreach to our youth in the Summer Nightlights events, which was well-attended and just quite a lot of fun in the community. I got to say that all the investment and all the hard work that West SacPD is really making a difference, such a larger attendance in the community. And I also attended the West Sac community meeting. Again, they are continuing to reach out and bridge, you know, relationships, answer some tough questions. I've seen community members in the past who've, you know, had some issues, but, you know, they're attending, asking the questions in public, and it's really a good transparent process that they're doing. In addition, last night's National Night Out with our fellow city council members, seeing out there was wonderful to engage with the community. And alongside with our police and firefighters, this being my first on city council, very impressed with all the work that went behind the scenes to make that happen. And it being, you know, awareness of public safety, I think that message came across clearly, and noticing making a difference. And earlier today, along with, again, fellow city council members, I joined the Urban Farm Program Tour. It was an awesome experience. I got to say, just all the years of hard work and investment that went into this among our community members, and the diverse participation among all those that were attended was very impressive. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency met on July 18th, and we approved a contract amendment for surveying services for the South Port Levee Improvement Project, and we authorized submission of an application to the California Department of Water Resources to receive grant funds for regional flood risk management activities. That same evening, the Delta Protection Commission met, and we heard presentations on the agricultural chapter of the Economic Sustainability Plan, Delta Water Master Activities, and the Delta Socioeconomic Indicators Project. Yola County Housing met on July 24th, and we heard a presentation on the Yola Resilience Collaborative Heat Resilience Planning Toolbox, which the council, I believe, will hear coming up soon, and approved intergovernmental agreements for grants management for Davis and Winters. And we received an accomplishments report for Sutter's Getting to Zero program with the, for the City of Davis. And then earlier tonight, the Port Commission met, and we approved a land lease agreement with UPS at the North Terminal. I also attended the Youth Fire Academy graduation and participated in today's Urban Farm Tour and last night's National Night Out.
You also, at the LAFCO?
Yeah, I attended the LAFCO meeting and also the Homeless Plan Executive Commission meeting as well, but I didn't, I didn't have a voting role.
Sure. I wanted to commend, commend you for the leadership role that you've played in navigating this process as the alternate member of LAFCO on behalf of the city. This has been an initiative of the city, spanning now two and a half years, to complete the process of incorporation and self-determination for the city, and also full representation of all the neighborhoods and residents, and the full spectrum of the people that we represent. And so the unanimous vote by LAFCO, again, LAFCO was the one that invited us to submit this application, but is in no small part due to their confidence in the city, but also the relationships that you've built as a member. So thank you for your leadership there. Mayor Potemorezko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Regional Sanitation Board of Directors met on July 24th to receive an update as to the Echo Water Project, the big project that's serving the region, having to do with managing effluents and making sure that our city's sanitation structures are all intact. The project is still tracking below projected expenditures, and the program budget is still very well in shape. We're actually ramping up construction on the tertiary treatment facility and making milestones. It's pretty, actually, pretty cool to take a tour. They took the Board of Directors for a tour of the plant a couple of weeks ago. I had taken one when I first joined the Board of Directors, so I skipped that and opted to work instead, but heard very positive feedback from the fellow directors who are seeing the progress on that plant. It's a multi-billion dollar investment to serve our community, and the receipt of that report was well-received. I attended the City School 2x2 meeting with our mayor and our city, excuse me, our Washington Unified School District trustees, Jackie Wong and Kobe Pasati. We did have a late start, but we did have the great opportunity to receive a report from our Parks Director, Tracy Michael, who told us about two opportunities that we hope to enjoy. We put in, in really good time, a really well-put-together grants packets for two park opportunities. One would be improvement to our West Acre Park, and more of an expansion improvement of the existing park, and the other would be the activation and creation of a Fallbrook site, which is in the Westmore Oaks community. Some of us know from, you know, experiencing that community. We do have Memorial Park, which is fantastic, and we have West Acre Park, but down in the back near where the old high school is, there's a lot of land that has been underutilized, and it's an opportunity, if we are given that grant, to really activate the area for the residents who live there. It would be open, if we were to receive the grant, I mean, it would be open after school hours, because it would be predominantly for use by the students there during the day. But we feel that, well, at least our director feels that, we're in a competitive position. It'd be fantastic if we got it. If not, there are other opportunities through Prop 68 that we could apply for, and that would expand to other park opportunities besides those two. So I know that some folks in the community will ask, "Well, what about, what about this park? What about this park in my community?" Well, this area needs, you know, a new park. I will say that there were certain criteria under Prop 68 that, including one that was, the applicant for the park area had to be about a half a mile radius of three, of a park area that's less than three acres of park space. So that necessarily took a few of areas out of the running, but also it was an or per, excuse me, median household income below $55,000, or, excuse me, $51,000. And so, you know, in our discussions, Director Michael is very optimistic about the possibilities of applying for other grants that might meet different criteria and might serve different areas of our community, such as Wright Park, which, as I know, been on the radar for a very long time. Finally, as mentioned by my fellow council members, the opportunity to visit the community last night, and you come to a dais after that with such an experience. And it's a great opportunity for a lot of us, and I know I speak for all of us, when I say that we serve a fantastic community. Each, each community was out in droves last night, a lot of positivity, lots of great feedback from our neighbors. And I know that for me, one of the highlights was, and I say this after our last meeting, where we had the presentation for the renewal of the Downtown Streets Team Project, that last night I had an opportunity to bump into one of our crew members who has been off the radar for a while. I hadn't had a chance to interact with them, and I'll leave him nameless, but I was really proud to hear that this particular person had been substance-free for the last 42 days, and was very proud, and he actually had a different appearance, and was engaging in National Night Out with his neighbors. And I got to say, that if there's a place to do that, it has to be our little city, our mighty little city of West Sacramento. So kudos to our community and kudos to our neighbors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. We only met once in July, so there, a lot has been happening. I did, in addition to several of the activities that I already mentioned, we did the graduation for the Summer Steps internship program, and also for the Home Run interns last week, so they are, the near graduations. So it's an impressive group of young people across all of our departments, across both high school and college. And that program continues to get stronger and stronger and stronger. And, and I think even today, actually, one of the Urban Farm folks said that they, you know, that one of the students are moving into full-time employment with them. So it's another example of how that's succeeding. Similarly, the California Center for Land Recycling chose West Sacramento as the single place in the state to feature as the best example of brownfields redevelopment in the state. So they're producing a major, I'm not sure if it's a short documentary or a really long promo video, one or the other, around the value and the importance of recycling land that we already have in our urban places, and how possible it really is when you, when you put your, put your mind to it and your tools to it and make it happen. And West Sacramento is going to be that, that example, the feature of that video. And then ARP is doing a similar piece as well, and Councilmember Sandin and I had the opportunity to participate with them in an upcoming piece that they're doing on cities that are making a difference for age friendliness and for livability for seniors and across the country. So, some good stuff happening. The, I attended the annual meeting of the United States Conference of Mayors at the end of June. We were heavily featured at that, and many of the projects that we're doing, including our, the partnership that we, that we in the school district are participating with the county and several of our health clinics, with Genus Plaza, connecting data and elements under the control of parents to make it easier for pediatricians and teachers and parents, for example, to collaborate and to share information to, on health and learning disabilities and other issues at the early stage. We and three other cities are the focus of this work nationally. Columbia, South Carolina, and Providence, Rhode Island are the other, are the other two major ones. And so we were giving, we were asked to give a progress report to the mayors of the U.S. about, about why, and what we're building on here with respect to the West Sacramento Home Run and preschool and early learning and our college savings accounts and the relationships there. So we're still, that pilot is still in the developmental stage, so we'll have more to report, obviously, later. But it was a good feature of the work that this city is doing in that space as one of the leaders in kids and education work across the country. We also presented on VIA and several of our other related technology partnerships as part of the Technology and Innovation Task Force at the Conference of Mayors. Our city and Austin were the two featured cities, kind of at different scales, but showing that you don't have to be New York City or Chicago to be able to leverage really powerful innovations at the civic level that affect real people's lives. Shortly after that, we won, you know, we were, I think, I actually, they were, I think it counts as the first runner-up for the City Livability Award for the VIA project as well. So that was a, it was a big, a big day for the work that we're doing in mobility. And as part of that panel, we hooked up with the City of Los Angeles and several others. Los Angeles has been the leader in creating this, this new protocol called the Mobility Data Standard. Essentially, it's a, it's interoperable data system for the various scooter and bike-share companies and ride-share companies and others to be sharing a common data platform that is common across cities as well. And Los Angeles, given their market powers, is one of the few places that can insist that companies use that. But by doing so, they've opened it up now to other cities, and a foundation has been created to govern it. And Sarah Strand, our mobility coordinator who's been leading the VIA project, was with me at the conference, and we're looking to, potentially, West Sacramento joining that, and then trying to bring the rest of the region in as well, as a way to bring some, make some, bring some order, but also to bring the power of data and analytics to the, in the, in the, in the hands of, you know, some privacy specialists, but bring that analytics to the, to the, to the, to the power of the innovation that we need to do in the mobility sector. So a good takeaway from that session. I also judged the Civic Tech, Tech pitch, which I always do every year now, and there's some good startups I'll be sharing with the council, some of the great ideas that are emerging in that space, many on the criminal justice and justice reforms side, but on health and then basic city services. and then basic city services and garbage as well. So, we'll be bringing those forward. After that, the United States Conference of Mayors hosted the first ever National Mayor's Youth Summit in Los Angeles. This was a week and a half ago, and I took two young people from West Sacramento to that summit. Both had participated in either the Home Run Program or in the SACOG Youth Leadership Academy. They were outstanding. If you, if you see, if you've had a chance to see any of the photos of it, you could, you could see them sort of pushing mayors aside so that they could stand next to the mayor of Los Angeles at the press conference. And they were, they were incredibly active in sharing ideas and concerns and issues around gun violence, as we heard earlier today, but also youth voter engagement, mental health in particular. They were, they were seen as the leading mental health experts in the room. Really proud of the, of the young people of our community and the sophistication and the care and the humanity that they brought to that session. And a lot of folks remarked at how impressive the West Sacramento young people were in their understanding of some of these key issues and what the way forward really is. And they had a chance to connect with David Hogg from March for, from March for Lives and from, who was, who was probably the most noted survivor of the Parkman shooting, and we'll be collaborating with him and with, with the other youth in that, in that summit on some additional initiatives. I will say also, I've been on the, in constant communication with the mayors of Dayton, El Paso, and El Paso in the last, last several days, and I will be traveling to Dayton tomorrow to assist the mayor there for a day with some of the, just the overwhelming amount of workload that she's got going right at this moment, but also to share with the people of Dayton, you know, the, the support and that they have from, from places across the country, but especially here in our, in our community, because I've certainly heard it from so many residents, that they, they'd like to share with the, with our, with our neighbors across the, across the United States, our, our rage and also our, our support for their strength and for their resilience as, as well. And then finally, SACOG, the SACOG Board and Transportation Committee have met this month and a couple of key items. One, one key policy issue. So, I've been reporting to you virtually every month about our efforts to try to, to meet the very aggressive 19% target that the State Air Resources Board has set for our region in terms of climate emissions. And I am pleased to report that we, we have, at the committee level this past week, approved a plan that we believe will meet the ARB's analytical test to, to achieve that 19% reduction. Having said that, it's, I think, we recognize that it is unlikely to meet the ARB's actual reduction target unless there's aggressive action taken by cities and counties and our private and nonprofit sector partners in order to deliver on what's in that plan. So, it's not self-executing. It requires significant changes in land use policies, not so much for us, because our land use policies are already tightly aligned with the state's climate goals, but for some of our, some of our other neighboring jurisdictions, it's, it would involve some significant changes to the, to what they have not done essentially since, since the climate crisis became clear. But also, but also transportation investments and other things will have to occur in order for that to happen. So, that should be, get our final approval at SACOG later this month, and then it'll be forwarded to the state. And we'll let you, I'll provide an update later about whether we get approval for that. It still assumes that green means go, the project that you heard about from James Corliss a couple of months ago. The 19% assumes that we get that funding or something like it. So, it's still an ambitious lift in order to accomplish this, and we still have to keep our head in the game, but, but at least we see that there is a path if we, if we can marshal our forces for that. And then second, it's time for the Regional Housing Needs Assessment allocations. And I think, I might be the only one that's been on the council since we've done this before. State law requires that regional housing needs allocation process is a state-level process that essentially says every city and county in California has to contribute to the, to growing housing to match forecasted growth and employment. And the actual requirement is that we zone enough for that, for that, enough, for enough housing. We're not required to produce the housing because the state, once in a while, does recognize that it is not local governments that build housing. All we do is permit. So, we're required to make sure that there's adequate zoning for our assignment of population growth related to employment, the employment forecast. And this has been one of the most, it's always one of the most controversial things in regions across the state as cities fight to make sure that someone else has to take on more units and you have to take on less, especially because the RENA, that's, that's the pronounced acronym. The RENA allocations also say what, the amount of affordable units that you must produce, the amount of low, very affordable and very, 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 very super affordable units that you have to produce. So, it's, in addition to being about growth for employment, it's also about growth in terms of social equity in a, in a, in a region and in a community. It's a long lead-up, but it's, if you don't do it, it's the one, this is the one part of our general plan that the state reviews, which is the housing element, and they review that in part for compliance with those RENA assignments. And there's a lot to it underneath it, you know, it's not like we don't, we don't zone for low, for low-income affordable housing. So, instead, the RENA regulations essentially count a multifamily zoning for that purpose. I mean, it's, it's more nuanced than I'm describing, but it's a 10-hour process to go through, but it's an important one. So, the, you know, the policy story that's going to be before us is that the RENA allocations were linked in SB 375 for the first time ever to the Sustainable Community Strategy slash Metropolitan Transportation Plan. That made sense because what used to happen is cities would say, "For transportation planning purposes, I'm telling you, state, I'm going to grow by 50%, so send me all the transportation money because we're just growing, 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 growing." But for housing needs allocation purposes, cities would go to a different state agency and said, "Oh, you know, we're not growing at all. There's just, there's no demand and we don't really need to grow." So, the state was hearing two things. Cities were, were lying to one of them or maybe both. So, the states said in the last decade, "We're going to bring these policies, these processes together, and it's going to be one number that's for both." So, you have to decide. Do you, you know, do you want, if you want to overstate it, you're going to have to zone more. If you understate it, you're not going to have enough money for your transportation projects to, to meet your demand. So, that's all happened. But recall that in the, in the foundational Sustainable Community Strategy, we agreed to take on more of the growth for Yolo County than our proportionate share based on our current population. So, Yolo County said, "We don't want to grow at all because we're trying to protect farmland and habitat," and we agreed. So, we said, "We'll take Yolo County's share of the growth." And I'm simplifying, but we said, basically, "We'll take Yolo County's share of the growth because we have all these recycled parcels, we have all these riverfront sites that could be, that could go very, you know, go vertical." City of Davis said, "We don't want to grow very much," and so we agreed that we would take theirs as well. And they agreed in turn that we would get most of the transportation funding that would come to Yolo County. So, that was the deal. And everybody was, was satisfied and happy, and that's pretty much lined up with our general plan already. So, that's, that's been the process. Today, we have to go back at it again, and I will just, I'll just say, I've been raising a yellow flag about the, the commitment of Davis and the county and everyone else in the region to continue to have the transportation dollars flow that way. Because when, when you actually get into the budget every year, you hear the same jurisdictions say, "Well, you know, it should go out based on population or it should go down based on road miles or something." And the deal is that it has, it's supposed to go out based on where the growth is actually happening. You make the investments in the future transportation network based on where the people are projected to be. So, you know, we're kind of setting that up as, it's, I'm not going to describe it as a fight, but I'm raising the issue at the regional scale around making sure that we, we bind those two together as they were always intended. And that second, the other chat, the other policy challenge, and this is a new one even to me this time around, is that for affordable housing, affordable housing, the way the formula has always worked is that you figure out what your total RENA growth obligation is, right? And then on, on, you take that number and you multiply it by some, some fixed percentage point across the whole region, and that generates your low income and your very low income. The problem with that is that when we agreed to, to take Davis and Yolo County's growth forecast, for example, that means that Davis has virtually, you know, a very, very small obligation to produce additional affordable housing. And that's just a consequence of the formula. But the problem with that is that affordability and income inequality, they're a problem today. The, the land use plan is a land use plan, it's what should land use look like in the year 2040, which is what you need to do to, when you're thinking about climate change and, and habitat conservation and all that. But for affordable housing right now, it needs to reflect also conditions on the ground today. So, a plan that results in us having, like the draft would likely be four times as much projected growth in affordable housing than Davis doesn't make any sense. It's academic to us because we're building as much affordable housing as we possibly can. We'll hit that number no matter what. We're committed to it as a policy matter. But, but from a regional perspective, Davis and others in the, Loomis and others in the region need to do their fair share on the affordable side, which will not have an impact on the habitat numbers and everything else. So, it's a long report, but it's just a preview of the policy issues that are likely to come. The RENA allocations have to be complete, I think, in the early part of 2020. So, we have a few months for this debate to occur and all the modeling and forecasting. So, more to come. So, that's it from our reports. I just also want to appoint Councilmember Sandine as the alternate member of the Executive Commission for the Homeless Tenure Plan. So, if there's no objections, then that will be the order. We have no other appointments under one C to make tonight. We're going to proceed to IM2, which is a presentation regarding the Yolo Resiliency Planning Toolbox prepared by the Yolo Resiliency Collaborative. Ms. Daniel?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Cheyenne Daniel. I am a Summer Steps intern with Community Development, and I'm also a student at Sacramento State. I'm here today to introduce Sarah Emerson, a fellow Civil Civic Sparks who created the Yolo Resiliency Planning Toolbox. Sarah recently graduated from UC Berkeley in May of 2018. At Cal, she majored in Society and the Environment and also double-minored in Environmental Economics and Policy as well as Forestry and Natural Resources. After graduating, Sarah served as Civic Sparks Climate Fellow in 2018, 2019. The Yolo Resiliency Collaborative is an ad hoc organization working towards bolstering resilience to climate change, with one of its major projects being the development of a toolbox, which includes policies, action, and implementation measures to help streamline local heat resiliency in the city. Sarah was the lead help on this project. This toolbox is important to the city because it can help further our climate action plan, which is a high priority in our strategic plan. This concludes my introduction of Sarah, and she'll further discuss the benefits of the toolbox. So, thank you.
Are there any questions for, for Councilmember Guerrero?
Did she say she was a student?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, that's excellent.
[laughing]
Thank you.
We have a, just so you know, Cheyenne, we have a tradition in the council that staff people's first report involves, not hazing, because that's a completely immoral and illegal thing, but some, some, you know, more challenging questions than, than, than normal. But we're waiving that for the Summer Steps program, but hopefully you'll be back as, as an employee of the city at some point, so.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. All right, welcome.
Thanks. Thank you, Cheyenne. So, yes, hi, my name is Sarah, and I'm the Civic Spark Fellow for the Yolo Resiliency Collaborative, and I'm excited to talk to you all today about the Yolo Resiliency Collaborative's Resiliency Planning Toolbox. And yes, Councilmember Sandy, you've seen this presentation already at the Yolo County Housing Board, but I hope it's still interesting for you. So...
It's, it's shorter than that one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
When you say Yolo County, I'm always envisioning a one-hour presentation, so...
It's a little less than an hour.
Thanks.
So, first, some information about the YRC. The YRC is an ad hoc organization formed in 2017 with members from jurisdictions throughout Yolo County. And Yolo as a region contends with severe impacts from climate change. And while Yolo has done great work on climate change mitigation, there's been a gap in climate change adaptation planning. And so, the YRC formed to address this gap and increase the resilience of our communities. And by being, its nature of it being a multi-jurisdictional collaborative organization really improves the YRC as a resiliency-based organization with members from the cities, the county, the university, and other jurisdictions, we are better able to do this resiliency work as climate change is, the impacts of climate change are not restricted to jurisdictional boundaries. Oh, too much. Okay. So, this commitment to collaboration inspired the YRC's stakeholder workshops, which have been attended by multi-departmental jurisdictional staff and other local stakeholders. We recently held our second workshop where we focused on communication and outreach. And at our 2018 workshop, we decided that the first climate impact we would focus on would be heat. So, why heat? Sacramento is projected to have the climate of Phoenix as early as 2050, and extreme heat has serious impacts on multiple aspects of our daily life, including our health. According to NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, extreme heat is the leading cause of weather-related death in the United States. And this map shows the number of heat health events in the region from 2011 and projected until 2030. According to the California Heat Assessment Tool, a heat health event is any heat event that generates public health impacts regardless of absolute temperature. So, most of the Yolo area has between one or three, and West Sacramento has about one of these heat health events every summer. But by 2081 to 2099, this number has increased significantly, with most of the county having between five to seven, and West Sacramento actually having four. But the boundaries of West Sacramento fall right along an area where the projections are to have seven of these extreme heat health events every summer. And 2081 might seem far away to some, but that's in just 62 years. That is the future of our children and grandchildren and maybe some people in this room. And so, when we decided on heat as the first, as the impact that the YRC wanted to focus on, we realized there are a few tool, critical tools missing. So, we decided to create the Resiliency Planning Toolbox. So, the toolbox is a document that contains template language that can be copied and pasted into jurisdictional plans and then modified to fit jurisdictional needs. And we wanted to create a regional tool that allows jurisdictions to share resources and work together while still respecting the sovereignty of each jurisdiction. However, not every city and not every jurisdiction has the resources, time, or money to take on the additional work required by tackling resilience, but this toolbox offers free, easily accessible content that will make the planning process much faster and available for a lower cost. And there are multiple goals of the toolbox, including to adapt and prepare for climate change, but we also want to support agencies in SB 379 compliance. Senate Bill 379 passed in 2015 and mandates that all cities and counties must include, incorporate climate adaptation and resiliency into the safety element of their general plans by January 1st, 2022. So, overall, we're hoping the toolbox will help streamline planning and help jurisdictions comply with state law. This timeline shows the overall efforts of the YRC so far. Toolbox development happened between October 2018 and right now, August 2019. So, the process involved me reading all the Yolo Climate Action Plans, all the Yolo General Plans, state adaptation guidance, and other jurisdictions' climate action and resiliency plans, and I used all this information to write the toolbox. And now, I've been presenting the toolbox to councils like this and incorporating feedback from these presentations into additional revisions of the toolbox. And we want to make sure we're creating a living, open-source tool that can be modified and maintained by communities, so we will continue to review and update the toolbox as necessary going forward. And the, that SB 379 deadline is on this timeline too, and we're hoping that the time, the release of the toolbox will coincide well with the deadline. So, what is in the toolbox? First, there's an introduction that explains the purpose of the toolbox and explains how equity was integrated into the creation of the toolbox. The next two sections contain template, boilerplate language that can be copied and pasted. The Planning and Language section has content explaining the necessity for adaptation and reasons why extreme heat should be addressed. And the Samples and Policies Act, Sample Policies and Action Sections is organized by topics that are relevant to general plans and jurisdictional operations. Some topics covered include those related to transportation, climate resilient architecture, agriculture, and urban greening, et cetera. And then the Implementation Section is focused on sort of a high-level approach because we knew that different jurisdictions face different challenges in project implementation. So, we primarily focused on questions that all jurisdictions should consider before, during, and after implementation, and also included some resources to help in the implementation process. And the toolbox also contains a brief conclusion that summarizes, that emphasized the importance of equity. So, that concludes my presentation. I'd like to thank all our member agencies and partners and all of you for your time.
All right. Are there questions? Sure.
Okay.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you very much for this report. You provided a lot of information and just, we, you know, in West Sacramento, we've got some cooling centers and, but one of the, one of the, you know, some of the feedback I received is it, is maybe the limited timeframes that it's available. Sometimes it, when it cools off here, it's really like in the early morning hours, and also pets. And that was something in reviewing the report that I did not see what we can do for, you know, individuals that have pets that don't want to leave their pet behind and if there's a way to include that in some way.
Yes, I actually talked to somebody in Phoenix about pets and cooling centers, and that's a topic that is... that's a topic that has not been explored in most places, so we have to think about that, yeah.
All right, well, thank you so much. It dovetails to some extent with the work that Councilmember Ledesma is helping to lead with our staff at the Mayor's Climate Commission as well, which just met in West Sacramento last week. So we're trying to tackle these issues from every possible lens, because the urgency is great, but also hopefully the opportunities, too. I should say to the Council, the message I gave to the Climate Commission this last week on this topic was, you know, find some positive initiatives that we can undertake in this space, you know, creating new economic sectors, new pathways to employment, that our regulatory powers are strong but limited, and that solely sort of, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do this, you can't do that, policies are unlike, they're helpful at moving the needle from like 7% to 9%. They're not great at moving the needle from 7% to 30%. And so the step change that we need requires unleashing all of our, you know, all of our brains and all of our energy, and not just the fear of compliance regulation. And so I'm hopeful that both through efforts like this that point to what other jurisdictions are doing and give you the easiest path forward, and also the work of folks like the creative people who are on the Climate Commission, that we're going to, we're going to break some new ground in this space and really make a difference, and do so in a way that doesn't, it doesn't feel like it's just pain. There will be some pain, but it doesn't feel like it's just pain. It's also finding out how to make a better community and better region out of the work. So thank you so much for your leadership in this.
Thank you.
All right, and then just, that's a good segue, too, because you said we're becoming more and more like Phoenix, and so there's one, one explanation is that what you just presented, another is that we imported Phoenix's Economic Development Leader to our region a couple of years ago, and he bought the heat. And so our item three is presentation by Barry Broom, the President and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. And it looks like Ms. Richards is going to play the Summersteps role in this, in this report, and introduce Mr. Broom.
Yes, I will. It is my pleasure to introduce Barry Broom, who I've had a pleasure working with for past four and a half years almost.
Diane, I don't think your mic is on.
One more time. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. It is my pleasure to introduce Barry Broom tonight, CEO of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. Before coming to Greater Sacramento, as you mentioned, he was CEO of the Greater Phoenix Economic Council and a career Economic Development Leader, CEO for over 20 years. Barry brings a wealth of experience from his work in markets across the U.S. It has, it's been my privilege to work with Barry and his staff on the Economic Development Director's Task Force, which meets regularly to share best practices, improve regional competitiveness, and discuss pending business developments. So with that, I ask that you welcome Barry and hear his presentation.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. Very excited. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. Nice to see you. Well, so the organization is four years old, and I think we've gotten off to a pretty good start, you know, big learning curve for me, a little bit of a learning curve for the community. I was joking, you know, when we were talking about Phoenix, you know, Phoenix doesn't admit it's hot. They're very good marketers. So, but, you know, you know, the, I think the market's doing well. I'll give you a brief overview of what we're working on, and then leave some time for us to have questions. And I don't normally, did I do it right? Well, there you go.
Backwards.
Is that right? No, you said backwards was forward. Now, is this right? I think so, okay. And maybe, and my, there you go, bam, okay. So, so one of the goals for me was to really create an institution for the community. You know, California's had a great economy. It's not always been something we pay a lot of attention to. And then, of course, you know, the economy isn't just about growth, it's about equity. So, you know, I have an Ohio, Michigan background, so Mayor, thank you for going to Dayton. And, you know, those communities are left with very little now to cling to for hope. And I hope that that changes for Ohio, which is where I grew up. So I spent 17 years in Ohio and Michigan. I started off as a neighborhood organizer in Cleveland. So I started working on anti-poverty initiatives, gang intervention, and then, you know, gravitated in economic development, because the economy wasn't absorbing these young people. And of course, you know, when you don't have a lot of hope, sometimes you make choices like a gun. So as I kind of built my career, then I, you know, the communities had all collapsed in the Midwest, so the CEOs came in and took over the economic development effort, because they were the people that had the money to do it. And so communities didn't even have the money to mount their own economic development effort, and that's when I started working with these CEOs. So the one thing about the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, there are 43 CEOs on the board, and they're constantly listening and hearing to what the challenges are to the community, and they're engaged in their civic responsibility to help elevate the community's economy. And since they have business backgrounds, that's where they can most lend credibility to the community's effort. And then, of course, the second model was to create a seamless market so that all the communities could share equally in the strategy, equally in the benefits, and then drive a more advanced economy. Advanced meaning independent of government, independent of consumption, right? So the 2008 crash was a lot about consumption, right? Excessive credit and housing starts to generate an economy, it wasn't very sustainable. And then, of course, our dependency on government has created challenges for us, because our equity numbers in the economy are poor in the region, and it's largely because our economy's anchored around government. And as you know, in order to get a job in government, you know, you've got to have a graduate degree. It's a very sophisticated job. Great for the economic base, but a challenge for creating equity across the board. So building this effort is, you know, really been my hope, and I, our original 18 CEOs recommitted another five years, and that brought great joy to me for the community. So it's really about one seamless movement in the economy. You know, we kind of get, you know, they reforming this, we want someone to come in and recruit, big deals, you know? And that's not really how you build an economy, but, you know, they were proper guys, so they looked around, and that's what they thought, right? You know, but building an economy is a much more sophisticated exercise in going out and getting the big deal. So it's nice to have a Centene, and, you know, we'll have another deal like a Centene in the next two or three years that we're working on, that we think. But you really drive your economy by making it more efficient, more productive. You include more people into it, and then you focus on outcomes like raising skills, raising educational standards, and making the transition for investment in the community smoother and more easily. And then you do a market-making exercise, where what is this market? It's not 20 little individual communities, it's actually a market. So one of the things that a lot of investment advisors say is, you're basically an airport and your labor statistics. It's a little more sophisticated than that, but that's a little bit on how a lot of people think about this.
Barry, if you'd like us to advance a slide, just give us a signal.
That would be great. I'll just, you know, do that or something. I'm joking. So one of the things that I found out, just as I was going through a huge learning curve and continue to do so, the community was going through a huge learning curve. So other than have these, you know, the CEOs really meet four times a year for two hours, and then they do a two-day retreat. So they produce most of the money for the organization. We have a two-day retreat where we build a strategic plan. We're a heavily metriced and measured organization, but, you know, they meet four times a year, and in between that, we actually have to work with the community to drive the economy. And as Diane was saying, our Economic Development Directors meet three hours a month with us. That's both in part in sharing knowledge, but also transparency, that we're doing things the right way, and that the Economic Development Directors in the region are open to give us feedback, criticism, but they also see our activities, where we're going, so there isn't some question about our conduct that would be uncomfortable to anyone. And then the other key thing is Champions. You know, our community has a broad network of civic people that are very engaged, and how educated are they on the economy and what we're doing? And we've had over 330 people go through an eight-hour certification in the region, and half of the elected officials in the region have gone through it, really to help them understand what do we do, why do we do it, and what are the metrics and understandings around the economy. And then, obviously, Industry Councils, we work on a Food and Agricultural Council, Mike Teal chairs that, and then we have a Competitiveness Council. So the Competitiveness Council is really about organizing a sophisticated measurement of the economy so that we actually understand what we're doing, and when you push that button, what happens to the economy? When you pull that lever, what happens to the economy? And I think one of the real challenges in our country right now is, you know, Wall Street up to the last few days was booming, and unemployment was 4%, and poverty was increasing, and, you know, people were still moving into desperation. So we need a new way to measure the economy. I really am excited about GoBiz and what Governor Newsom's team's doing. I'm happy to see that social progress is the objective of measuring the economy, because that is really what we work on, social progress. We don't, you know, so growth is important, it gives you the opportunity for social progress, but if the growth for the sake of growth, and you're leaving people behind, you're exasperating social progress. And I think that was what was fascinating about the Amazon Exchange in the Bronx and New York City, is people didn't want 25,000, $150,000 dollar jobs. That was going to produce a $27 billion tax base, because, one, they weren't going to get the jobs, and, two, they were concerned about the impacts on rents and things that would be affected to the people that weren't getting the jobs. I don't think I've ever seen anything like that in my life, and it was a very interesting experience for me to watch, and I've thought about that quite a bit. So, you know, how do we build new industries like mobility? You know, what's the next generation for food and ag? You know, what should we be doing in the life sciences? What's the overall competitive position of the market? You know, how should we behave differently? What are we doing well? What are we not doing well? And then how do you include a broader civic engagement model around that, so that everybody's educated, informed, and aligned on the mission? So obviously, the other good news about GoBiz is they're talking about building a net new state economic development effort to manage our brand and reputation. That's been a big frustration of mine, that California has allowed, you know, the governor of Texas to define our brand in the marketplace. It completely drives me out of my mind, actually. So, you know, some of the meetings I've had with Governor Newsom is they're talking about building a really modern brand and marketing campaign, which I think is really important, because our community is downstream from that marketing campaign. So if the state's only known for being 50th in the Wall Street Journal and taxes and regulation, you know, we try to punch through that as a region. That's pretty tough when, you know, the Wall Street Journal and business outlets are writing that same story over and over again. And in fact, it's not even an accurate story, which is even more frustrating. So having the state set that direction is going to be really important. And then what the region does, you know, our job is to make a market, right? So the state sets the strategic plan, we make a market inside the state, and then the local community does what West Sacramento does really well, puts in the infrastructure, the real estate, the amenities, the quality of life, pays attention to the Bridge District and some of these other strengths. And then, you know, we bundle those in a strategy. So the state sets a strategic direction, we build on that, we bring our 20 communities into that strategic plan, we execute against that, and each one of these entities have an important role to pull off the ultimate outcome, which is now social progress. So on the right, one of the things that we do that's really important, so the exchange between investment in the community is largely an analytics platform. So if a company is talking to us, at the end of the day, we're producing a 50, 100, 125-page document for that company. And that company has everything from their tech consultants to their MBA, to their HR people, that are basically giving us an RFI, of which we have to accumulate the market's advantages, produce that RFI, and give that back to the company. And then, of course, that economic data, so we say things like, you know, we're the fastest-growing market in California, we have the fastest-growing qualified workforce in California. Those are really the pitch points and the brand points to the investment community. We want them to think in terms of our region as someone that's on the rise and growing in the right direction, but we've had a reputation for being a quiet government town. So, you know, reputations lag, so it's the evidence and data. And I think, you know, I don't know if it's on this slide, but last four years, we've actually outpaced San Diego, LA, and the state of California. So our economy's doing really well. Probably my favorite indicator is our dependency on government has dropped from 28 to 22. My goal is to get that to 16. So in the next five to 10 years, we have to produce 32,000 tradable sector jobs to drop that to 16. Those tradable sector jobs are jobs that have a chance to create more inclusion and more equity in the economy. And then, of course, those tradable sector jobs will be high wages, and those tradable sector jobs will occur because of our competitive advantage, which will give us stability through ups and downs on recessions, but will also help us continue to wean ourselves off of government. So the simple version would be, how do we wean ourselves off of government, grow at 2%, create equity in the economy, and then build net new industry models that are resilient? That would be a simple explanation of what our plan would be. And then, of course, a lot of these, whether it's ENY, Deloitte, KPMG, they have big practices that advise companies. Those are called site selectors. Sometimes they're boutique groups, like Watley Donovan. So a big part of our interface is between these site selection consultants, because they could have anywhere from 50 to 100 clients that they're working with right now. Then obviously, we're looking at foreign and domestic markets. We're looking at Germany right now because of mobility. And then, of course, our domestic markets, we already know, Seattle, Los Angeles, the Bay Area, and I think ultimately, New York. But those are big markets, and I'm now going into LA and Seattle with quite a bit of regularity. And I think there's a lot of optimism in Seattle towards our community, and I think what's going to happen is you're going to see Seattle impacted. It's 50% more expensive than Sacramento now. Probably 15 years ago, we were more expensive than them. So they've been heavily impacted, LA's been impacted, but these are big global centers, and how those investments flow into our market, I think are going to be really important in the future. But as well, you know, the Bay Area needs to be more co-investing into our market, both to lower the impact in the Bay Area, but strengthen ours. And then, you know, we focus on Centers of Excellence, that's like the California Mobility Center, the Aggie Square model with UC Davis, those are Centers of Excellence. And then, you know, how do we keep our communities in a coordinated fashion, so we're all aligned and working together? So that's kind of our role on that market. So one of the reasons we work regionally is, you know, West Sacramento's booming, 11% of your residents work in West Sacramento, 50% work outside of West Sacramento. So, you know, how well Sacramento does, how well Folsom does, how well Roseville does, has huge implications for everybody, right? So how well West Sacramento does has huge implications for Davis and vice versa. So actually, 21% of our workforce goes to and from the Bay Area now. So we're highly connected to these other markets. That's only a California phenomenon, probably also maybe in New York, Boston, DC. So only the two coasts produce that kind of super commuting pattern. But this is why we want to create an efficient market-making exercise, because it's really about the jobs in the region, and how advanced they are, and how we create equity, and then the communities collaborate and share in that success. So these are kind of three, I'm pretty excited about all three of these. So there is a RFI out, there are multiple developers competing to be the developer for Aggie Square, it's a 25-acre development, and that'll be a $1 billion investment. So I'm optimistic that we will get an elite developer to partner with UC Davis. There are three high-profile companies that have already selected to go there. There's so much draw to that university, if we really open it up. I actually will not get to probably sell Aggie Square. I think it will build out as fast as the buildings will go up. That's how powerful UC Davis is. So UC Davis could single-handedly solve our government dependency and create the economy for social justice and equity throughout the region. I mean, it's a real powerhouse university. It's been insular, a little slow movement over the Causeway, all the things you already know, so having Chancellor May make that move into the Urban Corps was very big. And I think it's changed a little bit in Davis. Mayor, I was very fascinated to hear about your exchange with the city of Davis. Congratulations on that. But now Davis is citing things like, you know, Mars Research Center, so they're kind of getting out of their insular plane. A lot of that had to do with all of them going to the Champions Program and really started to understand how important UC Davis was to the broader region. And they thought, you know, Mayor Lee actually told me, I think differently about my role, understanding how important UC Davis is to the equity of the region's economy. And so they've kind of moved out of that town and count, and I think that's really fascinating. And then, of course, PEM Mobility, we have a $15 million commitment from SMUD. PEM Mobility is a California Mobility Center. It will basically be a hardware, prototyping, testing, and technical development center to bring new products to carbon-free mobility. One of the things we want to do is create a partnership with CARB as well. But we have the Community College System and Measure U and the city and some other, we have about another $40 million in pledges. So that'll be a $100, $150 million project, and I'm hoping next week it breaks ground. It'll be in partnership with Sac State and be in partnership with UC Davis and the Community College System. So that's going to be a great industry for us, because we'll be lowering the carbon footprint, creating new jobs, but we'll also be able to connect people from, throughout our community, into that job market, because a tradable sector job is everything from an engineer down to who packs the box. And a big part of getting equity in the economy is having entry points for unskilled people to move into the economy and not have it be a Burger King, but actually something that might excite them. So I think a lot of young people will be excited about making a Tesla or making something more modern like that. So I'm super excited about that. And then the Food and Agricultural, which has been our single biggest industry cluster, that's still a formula I'm kind of struggling with. We need a Center of Excellence similar to Aggie Square and PEM, and I just haven't really found the formula on that yet. I mean, it's growing well, it's healthy, but, you know, in the last five- But, you know, in the last five years, there's only been two spinouts out of UC Davis, one in food tech, one in ag tech. So we need to figure out how to get that engine revved up a little bit more. And of course, you know, we pay attention to returns. So, you know, this is all analytics and economic modeling, but, you know, we can pay close of attention to West Sacramento's role in the organization and pay attention to returns based upon jobs, not necessarily based upon locations because, you know, company can locate somewhere and the employees can come from another place. So a lot of this is about where the residents work, how that gets spent. And, you know, as I said, it's a very metric organization. And so there's a couple of companies recently that we have brought in. And I want to talk a little bit about Applied Spectra primarily because I worked more on that, the other product, you know, one of our business development people did. This is something that doesn't really always excite the community. First off, we undercount our numbers. One of the reasons we undercount our numbers is what I will do at next year is I will go back and do a five-year audit and present a report to the board. So, you know, we know a project that we counted 65 jobs has 500 jobs, or a project we counted for four jobs now has 250 jobs. One of the vulnerabilities when you're building something new is you want to promote it, catch yourself being hyperbolic, and then, you know, you got data that doesn't, isn't very consistent and your credibility can be affected very soon. So we keep these numbers. This is going to be 100 jobs, but this is their headquarters and their R&amp;D. This is a federal lab spinout. It's a Japanese-based enterprise. And most of their, and they have 60 engineers that will be moving here over time that have PhDs from Berkeley. So sometimes, young women get excited about the big, big thing. But if you look at Austin's economy, which is a super healthy economy, they made their living on sub-employee companies of 50 people or less. And what they really did in the late 90s and 2001, 2003, 405 is, you know, everyone's sitting at Google's doorstep offering them, you know, a $500 million incentive package. Everybody's at Amazon's doorstep offering a $3 billion incentive package. Well, you know, you can knock down 30 or 40 of these companies for 100, $200,000 development grants and get companies here that have a chance to really grow and become part of the fabric of it. So that's a company that I'm really excited about and that's one of our sweet spots. And it's going to be an exciting company and it's in four locations in the world. So it's got four global locations. So when you see it, at first you go, oh, 30 people, so hot. But it really has a chance to be an explosive company. And I'd like to see us as a community work harder at those and get more excited about So there's your return on investment, obviously. And, you know, a lot of times you'll get these return on investments and you think, God, those are really high. But that's why people invest so aggressively in economic development in Denver and these other places. People that haven't had this natural amazing economy that we've had in California. If you do it right, there are big returns. If you do it wrong, you know, you end up with Foxconn and University of Wisconsin. And, you know, the state of Wisconsin gave Foxconn more money over a 10-year period than they're giving the University of Wisconsin. Like, that's not how to do it, right? But if you're paying attention to how to manage these investment models, you can get a great return and really trigger a net new economy. And then those are our annual goals. So, you know, what we basically did our first five years is, you know, we set a goal. We benchmarked what was the highest performance in the market and we basically made that our first-year goal. And then we added 15% to 20% growth on the goal so that by our fifth year, we will double the best year that we had as a region, and that's actually happening. So it's a little bit of a swag. And then some of the things like, you know, that your team gets access to is, you know, impact analysis, our data on labor, property analysis, company analysis and vetting, marketing web, you know, just the baseline of that is about $150,000. So to replicate that in any one community, it would be more money than any one community's investing in the organization. So that's always, economic developers really like that because it gives them a menu of services they can't get on their own. And it tends to be something very popular. And then, of course, it becomes kind of the guiding force on how we do things. So looking ahead. Yeah, so obviously, we just came back from our retreat, you know. Obviously, we need to, you know, I'd love to see California work harder on the business climate, you know, because I think we're a little reckless with it. And working on the business climate doesn't necessarily, you know, our actual tax position is 25th in the country. You know, we do everything in a complicated way. But our effective actual tax treatments on industry, because we have so many different special write-offs, and I actually believe in this, we're actually 25th in the country in taxes. But we get rated 50 by the Wall Street Journal. And this is why having GoBiz and Gavin Newsom build that brand up is so important because that's not actually true. And, you know, but, you know, but we should still be paying attention to, you know, how do we make it easier on a small business? How do we make it easier on investment? We ought to be thinking more of that. Obviously, I talked about institutionalizing the organization. You know, how do we build our infrastructure and research capacity like the Mobility Center and Aggie Square? I mean, we could absorb a million square feet of lab space in an instant here, but it's very difficult, real estate to put in the ground. And how do we build our national and international brand? And then how is our economy balanced and inclusive? So some things that are coming up, we had a really successful site selection tour. So we have, these are basically the people that advise all these major corporations. And we'll have eight of them in our community November 6th and 7th. We just went through, are looking at our impact fee analysis. You know, this stuff is so complicated if you're not from California. But one of the things that I think, when we think in terms of fees, is, you know, sometimes I think we look at fees differently than tax base. We think it's important to be paying attention to tax base because that will help you with pensions and obviously police and fire and other needs. Fees are great, but tax base is really important. And I think a lot of times, the fee structure gets weighted too heavy. And I know there's a lot of analysis on that, but I think some of that could be subjectively looked upon. You know, we need to get more corporate Class A office off the ground. We need to get more research and development facilities off the ground. We're not currently collecting any fees on it because we really haven't been building any of them. And we've had an incredible shortage of office space being built in the community and that's causing us to miss a lot of great opportunities. And then obviously, you know, continue to work on our marketing to make sure that, you know, we're staying current on where we are as a community. So that's kind of simple. Those are the shortest of menus I've ever heard me talk in my entire life. Usually, I just got through the joke, but I was warned by Diane to keep it brief. So I really appreciate your leadership and your support in this important venture. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions if there are any.
I don't, but I represent the council at the board. So Councilmember Sandin.
I went through the Champions Program and it is excellent. So this was a good refresh for me. And I know you do serve on, you're on the board and?
The Food Mag Innovation Council.
Right, right.
The one that we haven't yet figured out.
Okay. Work on that. And I've heard a lot of good things, you know, about the organization. And I'm a little biased to USC, just so you know.
Oh, really? Oh, that's okay. Nothing wrong with that. I wish you had Kevin Nagel. I think he has USC tattooed on his shoulder.
And there is a school, Price of Public Policy.
Very good school.
There is a very good school that, you know, I'm sure would be happy to be involved in some way.
Yeah, I have engaged them.
Oh, good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Oh, you're right. Sorry. But Barry still needs to sit for the speaker, so thanks. We do have a request to speak on this item. It's by Michael Bish.
I have to pass.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks, Michael. All right, Barry, thank you for joining us tonight. Appreciate it. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda, which is items four through 10. Are there any items for separate consideration or question or comment?
Yes, actually, I'd like to pull an item. Let me just get to that part of the agenda.
Any over here?
Is item number nine.
Okay. So we'll take up item nine separately from the consent agenda. Anything else on consent? All right, seeing none, is there a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda, item four through 10 minus item nine?
Second.
Get them by Mayor Proton Roscoe and seconded by Councilmember Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. Then we'll proceed directly to item nine, which is consideration of an opposed position on SB 2066, LAVA, relating to the public employer's retirement system. Mr. Dros.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
So in the event that items been pulled from the consent agenda, it's for a complete staff report.
Okay. Happy to do that. And of course, have our administrative services director here as well, who is the subject matter expert on this topic, having to deal with it in her regular course of business. Basically, this is a bill to deal with a specific problem that it's aimed at. This is in relation to the Pension Reform Act that was passed in 2012. Since then, there have been some instances in which disallowable benefits have been determined by CalPERS to have been provided to retirees. In those instances, CalPERS has looked to the employees themselves to essentially pay back those disallowable benefits. The author obviously sees this as a problem. The issue that we have with this particular solution at the staff level is that it basically creates a uncertainty around CalPERS coming back after having signed off on essentially an MOU or a bargaining agreement and, excuse me, I'm getting nervous up here all of a sudden. Apologize for that. A little trouble in the voice, but I'll get over it. And basically, coming back after the fact, after they've reviewed those agreements and determined what is allowable benefits and retroactively changing their determination. We feel that that puts city governments, county governments at a significant disadvantage in terms of not being able to project the action that CalPERS might take retroactively and thus putting a strain on the general fund. And so that's the basis of the recommendation. This is a League of Cities opposed position. There's a large coalition of opposed to it. And I'll take any questions. And Robert is here as well.
All right. Other questions?
Just a quick question. Have you engaged in a discussion with the author's office about our, about what your perception is and your analysis?
I personally not, and I have not asked our lobbyists to do so either. Basically, the tact that I took, and mind you, I started in this position in April, was to hold off. The League of Cities obviously is, you know, leading the effort on this bill, hoping that they could come to some agreement on amendments to the bill that would satisfy both us as an individual city and the League as a whole. At this point, based upon our internal analysis and the League of Cities not being able to achieve their desired amendments, we thought we would come to the council with this opposed position to get on the record in the last month of session and then going into the governor's signed veto period. Yeah, so I guess essentially, my answer is we did not see a, any positive outcome from us personally, or us as a city, having a meeting with the author on this particular bill.
And I think it's rather late in the game to be going in and opposing a bill. But I understand that the League of Cities has been engaged in the dialogue. And if there's a potential for amendments, an opposed or less amended position is probably something that, you know, I'd be more interested in seeing in the future if that's what was, you know, what was being considered, if there's a possibility to change this and address some of the concerns that the sponsors have introduced this bill for. And yeah, if a pension, there's an anticipated, you know, pension that, or health benefits that are, you know, expected and somebody's retiring and it gets changed and then they don't, you know, they didn't plan for that in a savings in their whole life. And now, you know, it can put them in a really tough position financially, you know, for themselves, for their, you know, spouse. And then family members are going to have to step in and help, or it'll be, you know, public benefits. Somebody's going to pay for it. You know, it can, it's going to have a residual effect, which is why I don't, I'm not going to support this tonight.
Understood. All right. I'm going 100% support this. Our job is to protect the taxpayers of the city. There are other interest groups that are there to advocate for their members. But our job is to protect the fiduciary, respond to health of the city and of the citizens of the community. The essence of this is that if we make a payment to an employee pursuant to a contract and PERS reviews that contract and determines that it is appropriate and, you know, under their rules, and they change their mind later, but we made that agreement with that employee and made that pay to that employee under the informed presumption from CalPERS that it was going to be covered through CalPERS, that if this bill were to pass, it would suddenly become an instant lifetime obligation of the general fund of the city, which pays for police and fire and parks and all of the essential functions of the city, and our employees suffer as a result. So it's, this is why, this is why it's been a no-brainer. Governor Brown vetoed the same proposal for these reasons. This is not a new idea and it's been, it's been flowing before. And I understand why some interest groups may want to pursue this, but that's not our job as a city. And I'm in no way prepared to cut a police officer's position in order to have retroactively a decision made by PERS about something that was done under their review five, six, 10, 15 years ago. That's the purpose of CalPERS pre-sign up on these contracts. And so this is the appropriate position. A lot of conversations have happened with the author's office. And it's not appropriate for our city staff to be engaged in those negotiations because they don't have a position for most yet. So an extensive amount of negotiations occurred on this issue, and this is absolutely within our fiduciary mandate to protect the taxpayers and the current employees and our retirees as well through this, through this system. So I'm 100% supportive of moving forward with this opposed position. All right, if there's no further debates or motion on?
I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I oppose.
All right, thank you. So that motion carries three to one. And that's going to bring us then to item 11, which is a public hearing in coordination of resolution 19-38 confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering maintenance improvements to be made for the landscaping and lighting district number one. Ms. Rapero.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a routine item. In fact, we've been doing it for the last 30 years. There are two items, one right after the other, one for the landscape and lighting district number one, and one for the storm drain maintenance district. That we are not proposing any increases to these assessments. They were all adopted prior to the Prop 218 process. But it is a requirement of the county that we come before you, you adopt a resolution approving the map and the assessment in order to place it on the tax roll. So tonight, we're asking you to hold a public hearing and after the public hearing, to adopt the resolution confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering the improvements to be done.
All right. Are there questions first up at this time? All right, seeing none. Then we're going to open the public hearing on item 11. And we do have a request to speak, and that's by Pat Flint. Okay, all right. Anyone else in the public hearing? All right, with that, then we're closed of public hearing on item 11. Return it for any further questions or comments or a motion.
I move the recommended action.
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Mayor Proton Roscoe and seconded by Councilmember Guerrero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. Item 12 is a public hearing in consideration of resolution 19-39 confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering improvements for the storm drain maintenance district number one, which is very least landing. Ms. Rapero.
Exactly the same presentation as just a moment ago, except for this is for the storm drain maintenance district. Again, it's an assessment that's been in place for 30 years and a requirement of the county that we hold a public hearing and that you adopt a resolution authorizing us to move forward and place these on the tax roll, and we are not proposing any increase in the assessment.
All right, any questions for Ms. Rapero at this time? Councilmember Sandin.
These two, both these items, this one and the last one, are these the only two where we have, we backfill the?
Well.
The assessments?
Yes, sort of. So that's certainly a conversation I'd love to have in the future, something that I've So that's certainly a conversation I'd love to have in the future, something that I've been looking into as well. We do backfill on these because they were adopted prior to Prop 218. We do have the option, you know, of potentially reducing the amount of maintenance or the amount of general fund subsidy that is provided for these, or going back and going through a Prop 218 process to try and increase the assessment. Certainly things that we should consider potentially, given the amount of the subsidy. On the other community facilities districts, we've got both maintenance and debt CFDs. The debt CFDs are passed to where we should not have to pay any of those. The assessment is set to the amount that would cover the debt service payments, the requirements for reserves, and anything else that we have. For the maintenance CFDs, we do have the ability to increase those by up to 4% per year, and we do a really good job of trying to make sure that we stay within the amount of assessment revenue generated on those to do the maintenance, although there's always the option to do more and have the general fund subsidized, but we attempt not to do that. Thanks.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And with that, we're open the public hearing on item 12. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on item 12. Return it to the council for question or comment or a motion.
Move to approve.
I second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Guerrero and seconded by Mayor Portem Roscoe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Raper. Item 13 is a public hearing to consider resolution 19-43 adopting the 2019 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Ms. Whitaker.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I am here tonight to respectfully request that the council open a public hearing to solicit public comment on the 2019 draft Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. And I'm also here to request that resolution 19-43 be approved and that authorize and provide authorization to submit that plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Again, the 2019 Annual Action Plan will be the fourth year in the city's five-year consolidated plan. For the 2019 fiscal year, the city was awarded an entitlement grant of $429,547. Staff anticipates receiving about $30,000 in program income over this fiscal year, which would provide about $459,000 in entitlement funding for CDBG eligible activities. So the draft plan before you tonight allocates $307,000 to a sidewalk frontage improvement project in the Washington neighborhood. This project will provide improvements in walkability, connectivity, and ADA access to and from public amenities and public bus stops within the Washington neighborhood along Fifth Street. It's important to note that the project's location is located within two blocks of three affordable housing developments within the Washington neighborhood and also is located just south of a new proposed residential development. It is also important to note that this project is in support of the five-year consolidated plan top priority goal to achieve goals identified in Washington realized. Also, within the plan, you've seen, you can see that we've allocated about $60,000 to provide a one-year program to provide technical assistance to microenterprise businesses in West Sacramento. This program would be eligible for West Sacramento residents owning or showing interest in owning a microenterprise. This program hasn't been fully, the scope of this program hasn't been fully developed, however, staff will be working closely with economic development staff and the Chamber of Commerce to ensure that this program is really addressing the needs that are faced by our local small businesses. In addition, 90, about $91,000 will go to planning and grant administration, so that's about 20% that we usually take for grant administration each allocation. So this concludes my brief presentation, and staff will be available for any questions after the close of the public hearing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Amber, are there questions at this time?
I'll wait till after the public hearing.
All right. Great. Okay, then with that, we'll open the public hearing on item 13. We don't have any requests to speak, but does anyone wish to address the council on item 13 in the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on item 13, return to the council, Councilmember Guerrero.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question regarding the macroenterprise technical assistance program, and I saw two languages referenced. Could it be expanded to more languages, or do we just have a limitation on what we can do?
No, it can definitely be expanded. We found that Spanish and Russian is one of the major languages other than English, so that's why we were proposing that. But yes, we could always, when we do the request for proposals, we could make that a requirement, that they provide specific language translations.
Okay. So there's Russian, and then there's other, like, I've had different individuals from the C community who are interested as well, so, and I don't know what their language capacity is, but maybe just, if that's possible, you know, just like to know. So I can, you know, once it's up and running, I can refer people to the program, because it sounds like a great opportunity.
Yeah, we can definitely reach out to organizations affiliated, and we can see what languages they would like to have the program be offered in.
Okay. Thank you.
So one way you might want to think about doing that is to, is providing additional points or other, you know, as you release the request for proposals, to incentivize, because I would want to be careful to not narrow the number of folks who could potentially bid to provide these services if they, if they don't have, Afghani, for example, you know, that, I mean, it's, we have a wide diverse, we have all the world's languages in the city, and so I'm trying to, trying to make sure that we incentivize and give credit for the kind of linguistic diversity that Councilmember Guerrero is very appropriately raising. But I just worry about, if we set a minimum requirement of particular languages without necessarily knowing that, you know, in a rigorous scientific way, that there's the demand for them in terms of the business development, that we may be, we may be reducing the scope and therefore the quality and the efficiency of the, of the potential bidders that we might get. Other questions or comments on this item?
Just the comment. I, I think these are two fantastic allocations as far as the investment in the Washington neighborhood, I mean, a community that has been in great need of resources to uplift the complexion of the area. I think this is a fantastic step in the right direction and is going to make a big impact. But also, just the idea of the macroenterprise, microenterprise, excuse me, technical assistance program. I mean, West Sacramento is, you know, it's such a fantastic community for people who want to invest in, you know, creating their own businesses and the opportunity to, or the support to allow them to progress along the continuum in a successful way. I think this is a fantastic investment, so I commend you and thank you for your presentation.
Just to underscore that, you know, part of the, we're pretty good at getting grants in the city and support from external agencies, and a lot of that has to do with the, our really excellent team of staff, and also that when we, when we do something like the Washington Realized Plan, which we, you know, we got, we got financial support from the state federal government in order to complete that plan, that we stick with it. You know, it is an actual plan. It's not something we develop, put on a shelf, did one thing on, and then put it away. The investments that we just completed in the Washington neighborhood, which have been, you know, some of the most significant ones in basic underground utilities and bike lanes and sidewalks in that neighborhood have been, you know, some of the biggest, and art, bringing the kind of Katie, and art in that neighborhood have been some of the biggest investments in that neighborhood in a century. And in all the private investment that's been occurring in Washington Square, and obviously with CalSTRS and now with the River One Project, and even the proposed projects you have listed on this, on this, that, that when agencies that have supported our planning work and some of our initial projects see that we, we keep delivering and that we keep, keep to our principles and to our strategy, it really helps in terms of getting further resources. So I appreciate the, this building up from the, from the base of work that has been underway by your partners and colleagues and our, and our partners in the community in order to bring this forward. So, great work.
Thank you.
All right. So now we have before us the resolutions. Is there a motion?
Move to.
Second.
Okay, it was half moved, but I guess it was enough.
I moved and then seconded.
By Councilmember Guerrero and seconded, fully seconded by Councilmember Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. Item 14 is consideration of City Council Resolution 19-75 authorizing the execution and delivery of a fiscal agent agreement, a bond purchase agreement, and a continuing disclosure certificate authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds, approving the form of the official statement and the distribution thereof, and authorizing other actions related to community facilities district number 29, which is Port Town Infrastructure. Mr. Ron Bird.
Yeah, on June 19th, the City Council approved the formation of CFD 29, which is for the Port Town subdivision, and we're here tonight to request that you approve resolution 19-75, which would authorize the issuance of bonds that are secured by the special taxes that are assessed under CFD 29. So in short, this project will generate about $3.8 million in project funds to acquire public improvements. There's about $13.6 million in improvements that have been constructed there, and so it's going to be a small, a small portion of what, what's been constructed by the developer. And, and, you know, the conditions are there that would allow us to go to market, to sell the bonds, so they started selling homes mid-June, and so the project's moving along and showing the progress that we need to, to go to market, as we say. So should the City Council authorize the issues of the bonds tonight, we would go to a bond sale in about three weeks, and then we would close in September and, and complete the transaction with the developer. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right. Other questions? All right. We have no requests to speak on this item, so if there's a discussion or a motion, it's fairly straightforward. Councilmember Sandin.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
In the budget and cost impact section?
Yeah.
It says with one exception, the fees associated with financing would be largely continued upon a successful closing. What, what's the exception?
Oh, so the exception is the appraisal that was done would be a cost, that would be a sunk cost whether or not it proceeded. And actually, the developer put up funds towards that, so it would, you know, should it not proceed, there's a source of funds.
Okay. Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Sandin and seconded by Councilmember Guerrero. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. Item 15 is consideration of resolution 19-77 for the I Street Bridge Replacement Project. McCoy.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. Jason McCoy, supervising transportation planner, Public Works, and actually joined this evening by Jesse Gotham, who is City of Sacramento project manager, as well as Zach Savilia, who's the vice president, Mark Thomason Company. Actually, now it's Mark Thomas, not Mark Thomason Company, and he's managing the consultant team on the project, so we're all available to answer questions. The item before you is environmental approval. It represents the last step in the environmental approval process for the I Street Bridge Replacement Project. The project already received certification of the EIR by the City of Sacramento on June, excuse me, June 25th, and then the NEPA clearance had already gone through with Caltrans approving the finding of no significant impact. So both the certification of the EIR has taken place and the close of the NEPA process. So as the responsible agency, City of West Sacramento's role here is to approve the EIR, review and consider approving the EIR, the plans associated with the I Street Bridge Replacement Project, adopting the mitigation monitoring plan, and a, excuse me, finding of fact and statement of overriding considerations. So I have a brief PowerPoint to go through, and I'm available to answer questions after. So this is not anything new that the council has not seen before. The I Street Bridge Replacement Project is in the North Market area. Just for context, in the South Market area is the Broadway Bridge Project. This is from the 2011 river crossing study. The goals of the project are, as shown, increasing economic development, improving the potential for urban plan development, and to facilitate mobility across the river. We are following the neighborhood-friendly bridge guidelines that were adopted by the City of Sacramento, that among other things looks to serve local trips. The bridge is not to go into residential neighborhoods, serve all users, and be low-profile, low-speed. This is the location of the project. The project itself actually facilitates removing a number of viaduct structures, which actually is supported by Caltrans, this project as a whole is supported by Caltrans, because overall the, excuse me, operations and maintenance costs would be significantly reduced by removing these other structures, which are identified in red here on the map. This will include Jaboom Street, the current access to the historic I Street Bridge from C Street in West Sacramento, as well as the prostructures from I Street in Sacramento. As far as the bridge design goes, we worked very closely with the U.S. Coast Guard, City of Sacramento, the Army Corps of Engineers, a number of other permitting agencies for this project. Per the U.S. Coast Guard, there's a navigational channel 278 feet clear required for this project. That is due to the confluence of the American River with Sacramento River, the location of the water intake facility in Sacramento, and the location of the historic bridge itself, the I Street Bridge. So all of those had to be taken into consideration, along with the natural bend of the river in order to identify where the location of the I Street Bridge would be, as well as what the clearance would be required in order to allow for barges to navigate through the opening. As far as the cross-section itself goes, I've shown here on the slide the existing historic bridge cross-section, which identifies nine-foot travel lanes and the five-foot sidewalks being replaced with approximately 59-foot truss width, which would facilitate travel lanes, 12-foot travel lanes to six-foot bike lanes with two, two-foot buffers to facilitate much safer travel for multimodal, as well as two 12-foot pedestrian walkways that would connect both the Sacramento's regional trail system with that on the waterfront in West As far as the project schedule goes, we are on schedule for the project. This would facilitate the wrapping up of the project approval and environmental document phase. We still have some budget remaining and are going to, or currently seeking Caltrans approval to move some of the right-of-way phase budget into, or PAD budget into the right-of-way phase so that we could go ahead and start some pre-right-of-way activities. As far as the final design and construction goes, once the environmental approvals are started, are completed, then we can start the right-of-way process, and we can start the final engineering phase of the project. All that depends, though, on the architectural component of this, which I'm going to get to in just a little bit. So regarding the environmental process, the notice of preparation was issued back in September 2014. We have continued working on the environmental document. The draft EIR was circulated for a 45-day period between September 28th, 17, to November 12th, 2017. All the written comments were reviewed and addressed in the final EIR, which was published. As I had mentioned, the final was certified in June 2019, and we also received the finding of no significant impact, completing the NEPA process. Today is August 7, 2019, for City Council to consider the environmental document, and we're also requesting direction that we submit the notice of determination following this meeting. We have a five-day period to do that, and we're looking to do it before August 14th. All the environmental documentation was provided both here in the City of West Sacramento as well as City of Sacramento. As the lead agency, the City of Sacramento kept all the documents online. They were easily accessible, and our own website linked to the City of Sacramento's website in order to view these documents. So regarding the environmental analysis, the EIR serves as the basis for the findings, which were included in the staff report packet. Most of the environmental impacts were reduced to a less-than-significant impact. There were three items, resource areas, that were significant and unavoidable, two of them in Sacramento, one in West Sacramento. For West Sacramento, it's identified as construction noise, so those are temporary noise impacts. We do include mitigation measures in the EIR in order to try to lessen those, but the impact for temporary construction purposes due to the location of residents in the area is still going to be significant and unavoidable even with impacts. However, the good news is, as I said, most of the other impacts are reduced to a level of less-than-significant impact. As such, because there is, are significant impacts associated with the project, that would require a finding of fact and a statement of overriding considerations to be adopted for the project, that's also been included in the packet. As under SEQA, a public agency may approve a project as long as there are two items. One is that we've reviewed the impacts, and there is no feasible way to lessen those impacts beyond what has already been stated, and that's per the guidelines 15091. As far as this project goes, staff is confident, the environmental consultant is confident, that all significantly, potentially significant environmental impacts have been mitigated to the extent feasible. And then the second is that there are benefits of the project that potentially outweigh those significant impacts. I've actually listed those on the slide here. Those are safety, design, traffic operations, land use and economic development, accommodation of transit, which is not currently able to cross the historic I Street Bridge, as well as ADA compliance. So all of these are backed up by substantial evidence in the record. So as far as the architecture goes, I mentioned that the final design is going to be based on the architectural design that's selected for the project. We've had a number of outreach meetings all the way back from 2014, with two community meetings and the environmental scoping meeting, all the way through the first, second, design aesthetics meetings, and then we have another one that's going to be scheduled coming up. Councilmember Guerrero was at the, the second meeting, as well as our city manager. Councilmember Guerrero was at the second meeting, as well as our city manager. We had a very good turnout. And at that meeting, we presented, from the initial nine concepts that were brought forward in the first public meeting, we narrowed it down to another four. These are the initial nine concepts that were brought to the first meeting. Based on the feedback that we received, the two project goals that the members of the public were looking for in this were increasing riverfront access, making walking and biking easier, improving travel safety and emergency access, as well as other goals, including economic development and reducing vehicle delays. So, based on the community feedback, we had an in-person workshop, as well as a virtual community workshop, that went on for a couple of weeks, to not only give members of the community who could attend, but also members who could not attend, an opportunity to weigh in on the project. Interestingly enough, both of these were very similar as far as the preferences that folks had mentioned online and in person for the different bridge types, including the Garden Bridge, the Spring, and Solar Arch being some of the top preferences, at least visual preferences, by the community for various reasons. So, based on the information that we received in the first feedback meeting, as well as our ad hoc design committee meeting and our bridge selection panel meeting, we chose to move forward with four concepts for consideration. These were further refined and are presented here. The values, the cost values that are shown here are estimates at this time. They are definitely going to be changing as we continue the design of each of these concepts. So, the through concept merged some of the more budget-side, budget-conscious design choices, along with working to provide still some of the things that the community wanted to see, like the overlooks, a more pedestrian-focused experience, the ability to view the river from both a driver perspective and a pedestrian perspective, as well as having places that people could sit and enjoy the view. All of these were brought forward from the first nine concepts. Of the, in the second workshop, we have some preliminary results of what folks liked about this. We asked them to select two of the design elements that you like most when viewing this concept. Overwhelmingly, folks liked the path experience or the pedestrian experience. Others liked the overlook experience, and then some of the other smaller, the form, sustainability, and driving experience. The garden concept was one of the top visual preferences from the community in the first workshop. It was further refined and then brought forward. The garden concept, it was supposed to mimic some of the rolling hills in the area, as well as provide a kind of arena view of the waterfront. It does limit some of the view from the driving perspective. What people liked the most of this was, again, the path experience and the overlook experience. Folks liked the Sustainability Act's point of view of it. I would argue that planting isn't sustainability. However, it does reflect sustainability by putting some of the garden features on the bridge itself. Also, some of the form, comments that got related to the form, they felt it was more inspirational than the through concept or some of the other concepts. The spring concept was brought forward as well. This was a hybridized version of some of our other concepts that were initially presented in the first nine. This has an interesting pedestrian experiences in that it's wider than a lot of our other concepts, providing an opportunity for actually a dedicated micro-mobility lane, if you will, in between the truss structure and the vehicle lanes. What some of the folks mentioned about this was they liked the form, the overlook experience, and the path experience, very similar to some of our other design options. And then, the solar arch concept was the last one brought forward. The cost of this actually was significantly refined. So, it went from an estimated $350 million to $250 million. So, we're getting a little bit more in the potential range of possibility. So, some of the interesting points of this design were that the solar panels themselves are actually functional. They could provide enough power output to light 40 homes, I believe it was the figure. So, that's enough to keep the bridge lit and to operate the bridge while still giving back to the grid. So, not surprisingly, folks really felt the sustainability aspect of this was something that they liked. They also, form was also the largest percentage there because it does have a more inspirational form, at least from the perspective of other folks, from what they had seen in the other bridge concepts. The driving experience, path experience, and overlook experience were also mentioned. So, as far as funding goes, we were pleased to hear that we received another $4 million from SAICOG in State Transportation Improvement Program funding.
It's not done yet.
It's not done yet. I've got my fingers crossed that everything's going to move forward just fine. That brings us to a total of $11 million for the project that we would, will be receiving, hopefully, from SAICOG. That, along with a build grant that was submitted by the City of Sacramento recently. This was our third attempt at the build grant. We'll know in November whether or not that was successful. We did apply for $18.45 million to that program. We also have an expectation that we'll be applying for local partnership program funds, so LPP funds through CTC. It's City of Sacramento as lead agency would be submitting that application, and City of West Sacramento would be offering support. And then, in addition to that, we would be looking also at the next funding round for SAICOG. Initially, we had asked for $22.5 million, so we will continue asking for additional funding through that program, with the expectation that we're going to need those additional fundings for some of the higher-cost elements of the bridge, depending on how, which one moves forward and how many of those elements are going to be included that are not going to be participating through the highway bridge program. So, through the highway bridge program, only those elements that are functional elements of the bridge will be approved. Those that are aesthetic elements will not be federally funded, and we would have to turn to some of our local or state allocated funding for those elements. So, as of right now, our total project funds, should we be successful in both the LPP funding grant and the build grant, is at $178, roughly, million dollars for the project. So, we are within range for three of those concepts that were presented. And then, as we continue moving forward in the process, if we find other grant opportunities that we could pursue, we will certainly do it. It just depends on which direction we're going to be going with the project. So, as I said, Jesse Gotham, City of Sacramento, is available, as well as Zach Savilia, from Mark Thomason and myself, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Are there questions?
I'll wait till after public comment.
All right. Okay. We just had one request for public comment, and it's by Dana Langford.
I have a question. Will this bridge swing or lift? I was not able to get to the meetings, unfortunately, and I can't always watch things at home because our internet is a little spotty out where we live still. The pedestrian areas and overlooks, they all look nice, but isn't that what we're revamping the I Street Bridge with, to make it solely pedestrian and bike-friendly? And wouldn't that be a great place for pedestrians to sit, look at the river, without having to deal with cars or emissions from the cars or those kind of things? Just a thought. And that brings some confusion to me because we are spending a lot of money revamping the I Street Bridge, and we're spending a lot of money on this bridge. So, just a little food for thought. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, with that, we'll return to the council. Question, Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes. I had a question regarding funding opportunities. You mentioned the build grant that you, that we had applied for. And is this going to be our last time, you know, as far as meeting the timeline? Or is it annual, and we can move forward if we don't get it this time? Just thinking about, thinking ahead of what other opportunities for this and the local partnership program?
Well, as the lead agency, I would like to have Jesse Gotham come up. They were the agency that submitted the grant, and he could probably provide some more information.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, we applied under the Tiger program. Initially, I think that was 2017, 2018, we applied under the build program. We went through a DB process with the DOT grant administrator and got some really good feedback on where we had placed in the previous round, emphasizing readiness. So, once you make it through the first two tiers of review, they emphasize the project being ready. And one of the key things to show is the NEPA clearance. And as Jason mentioned, we got that NEPA clearance this June. So, we were able to slip that certification into the application, and it shows that we've made progress in terms of the federal milestones. So, we're hoping that puts us over the edge. So, if we find out we don't prevail, if we don't get it, I suppose we could look at a 2020 program. I don't know the status of that program, but I know in 2018, it was one and a half billion, and this call for project was 900 million. So, we'll see. So, and in terms of the LPP program, I think he summarized it well, that we can apply under our City of Sacramento's participation with the Sacramento Transit Agency STA Board. And I think we can apply because we have a T-DIF in place. So, for that has to be one competitive program for LPP funds, so.
Okay. And also, given that we've had, you know, just an increase in the tariffs, and so that impacts our cost, you know, in building things, looking at the cost estimates here, did that, was that taken into consideration? Or did we, are we just hoping for the best in the future?
Yeah. So, estimating is an art. Zach Savilia's here with Mark Thomason. But, of course, things like the cost of steel and escalation definitely come into play. So, you saw our project timeline. So, the quicker we can get out to bid, right, the better bids we'll receive. I know we're experiencing in Sacramento the fluctuation in bids due to some of the trade issues on our streetlights. We are seeing that pretty readily. In terms of how it plays into the cost here, you know, we have about a 30% level of design on the approach structure. On the architectural elements, it's much more programmatic, so it's pretty wide range. So, those are costs, though. They have heavy contingencies in those numbers, rightfully so, just because, you know, we're really at a high level of design. We haven't gone into the details, so.
Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate the partnership with Sacramento.
Ms. Maruska?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you just walk me through the process of how one of the four would be chosen?
Sure. So, as far as our timeline goes, we're looking at the end of this year to move forward with our next meeting. What we specifically did at the first meeting was ask folks, what is it, which of these bridges do you like the most? And then, what elements or what goals do you find to be the most desirable with each of these? And then, the different elements will give us some comments about each one. The second round that we went to, we didn't ask folks which bridge that they liked the most. We said, okay, again, which elements of each of these do you like the most? And then, as far as the goals go, based on your goals, which ones of these actually meet your expectations of how this bridge is going to function? Are you, if you're going to be primarily walking and biking across the bridge, if you're going to be driving across the bridge, which one of these different designs speaks to you the most? Then, once we get into this third aspect, we're going to be trying to refine everything down to really what it is that people really want to see. Some of the things I didn't include from our outreach analysis, which I'll be providing for the council, once it's been fully compiled, some of the things that folks had mentioned was that, for instance, on the Garden Bridge type, that planting on the span itself is not necessarily a requirement. I believe it was 60% of the folks that responded said, "It's not really a requirement for me for that design to have that on there." That's significant because just for looking at the Garden Bridge itself, having planting elements on the movable span is an engineering challenge because, of course, as soil gets wet, it gets heavier. So, calibrating the weight of that span that's moving up and down with your counterweights is going to be tricky, and whether you have to oversize things or not in order to accommodate that, that reflects costs later on. So, what we're really trying to do at this point is refine things down to really know what it is that the folks want to see in this bridge, and then try to provide those in our next concepts, which I believe we're going to be moving forward with, two concepts for folks to review. And then, ultimately, those concepts are going to go before our ad hoc design committee to provide some comments on, and then ultimately, the bridge selection committee.
Yeah. So, just to emphasize, because sometimes when our, when our staff and our partners get immersed in these public outreach processes, they forget that they are not referendums. Right? This is, we're not actually, it's not, the fact that 60% say it's okay is not, doesn't change the decision. The decision point is still here, ultimately. It's with the two cities, and so we're trying to understand, get a sense for feel, look and feel questions, and experience questions from the public, but it is not a referendum at any level. You know, we're not seeking votes in any way. And the final decisions will have to be reconciled because there will be choices that have to, clearly, there are going to have to be trade-offs and choices that are going to have to get made, a significant one obviously being cost, but not the only one.
That's correct. We're not asking anyone to select a bridge. That definitely would lead us down the wrong path.
I just, you know, obviously, there are three choices that are within range of reality at this point, at this point, right? And I just was curious as to what happens if the community comes back and says, "We like bridge number four, the solar one," and, you know, then what? If we're not at the point where we can make a decision that, you know, that absorbs $250 billion worth of investment? And just a few easy questions for you. With respect, I mean, your presentation was fantastic. Thank you. With respect to the solar, and I'm not naming it correctly, what is the, how do I reference it?
Solar arch.
Solar arch. Did you say that the solar arch would have potentially the amount of power to power 40 homes?
That is my understanding from the bridge architect, and if I'm mistaken, that is correct.
Well, that's cool. But how was that, how would that work practically? Like, whose 40 homes would that be? I mean, has that worked before in some other?
Well, it's the, it's the equivalent power generated that would be.
So, it wouldn't necessarily go to 40 homes necessarily, but, okay, around the grid or the bridge itself? Okay. And then, with any of these, did you say that Jaboom would be the Jaboom driver?
That comes, that connects to Jaboom. I hopefully have named that.
But not Jaboom itself? That, that street would still exist?
So, as it exists now, it connects to Rail Yards Boulevard. However, I believe in the Rail Yards plan, actually, I don't want to speak to it. Jesse Gotham, since he's with the city, I don't want to speak for the city.
But the ramps coming down.
The ramps are coming down.
Jaboom Street with the hotels and stuff on it will no longer connect at all to this.
That's correct.
That's not a discretion, right? So, the one, the one financial given here is that the federal money that we've qualified for is to, is, it's a bridge replacement project. That's what this is. And through some very creative work by our staff, but principally led by the City of Sacramento, to identify each of these structures as bridges in and of themselves, that's why we were able to achieve $88 million out of that bridge replacement project. So, the, so the one thing that is, that cannot be changed, no matter what we want to do, is to say, leave up the ramps on any of the, on any of the sides, whether it's coming from J Street, coming from Jaboom, or coming from R.C. Street.
You will see the ramps remaining for a period of two years, where the population of the Purple Martin are located specifically for mitigation purposes. This allows us also an opportunity through the I Street Bridge debt conversion for active transportation project. Let's take a breath on that. That's the debt conversion. That allows us to move forward with planning and design for approach ramps to connect with the historic bridge, and then, the other ramps can come down and something else can be brought into its place. I don't want to speak too much about it. Katie Jacobson is the project manager on that, and she could provide more details.
That's fine. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Councilmember Sandin?
Thank you for the presentation. I've been involved along the way, so it's exciting to see it evolving. I have a question that's related to the preliminary plans, not the EIR or the overriding considerations. And specifically, the, and I think I may have brought this up in the past, but want to revisit it, the Second Street Access.
Yes. Yes.
So, that, it looks like it takes out some homes and parallel, and is a buts McDowell Lane, I believe. And I just, I really, I want to understand, because taking out houses here, I think is a big, a big deal, and I just want to understand the rationale again, and any alternatives that were possible.
Sure, we took a look at, so obviously, the bridge comes through and bisects over the Second Street. Initially, we were looking at tunnel options, we were looking at other configurations of connecting directly to, can we lift it up, can we drop it down? Because you're dealing with work in the levee prism, dropping roadway down would have some significant impacts associated with that. We also looked at connecting Second Street to B Street.
Yeah, it looked like B could be possible.
We tried, we tried that alternative, however, doing so would require that we actually push the levee into the Sacramento River and restructure that levee, which turned out to be a nonstarter on the part of Central Valley Flood and Army Corps with regard to that reconstruction. Zach Savilia could probably provide more details as far as what their restrictions were, but it was both expensive and a huge permitting challenge for us to be able to do that. Then we started looking at, okay, well, what do we do to provide access to these properties that are located there? So, we looked at providing a universal street, so a universal standard street connecting on the backs of those properties that are currently fronting on Second. Doing so removes a granny unit that's in the back of one of those properties, and the elbow would require removing a portion of an existing apartment complex that is there. We did an analysis, or that being Mark Thomas' analysis, to see exactly how much of that building would have to be removed, and whether it's structurally possible to do that. Their memo that they developed in concert with one of their structural engineers, they found that the portion that's represented here in these plans would need to be removed while still being able to retain a large portion of that, of the existing apartment complex. However, the Victorian that's fronting off of the roadway there, that elbow, would need to be removed because our universal street standard is 30 feet wide, I believe, which would actually hit the structure.
And what length of time is given for the acquisition of properties to make this possible? I didn't, I just didn't see that referred to in the plan.
The reason why it's not referred is, this is a federal project, and we're barred from discussing the federal, any of the acquisitions associated with that until the approval of the environmental documents. So we've had a number of conversations with residents who I've been in contact with, who's contacted me, and I've let them know that, you know, this is the process that we have to go through. After environmental approvals, we will be able to enter into the right-of-way phase, and we'll be able to openly discuss a lot of these different options. I did encourage folks to, and sent them links to environmental documents. I actually went to the second floor and sat with folks and went through the document with folks to let them know, you know, where they can find information, how they can submit comments. We did get a number of comments from folks regarding the acquisitions, and looking forward to discussing them further as we move forward. But as soon as the environmental approvals happen, we, as I had mentioned in the presentation, plan to start right away on pre-right-of-way activities.
And thank you for spending time with people when they're asking, that we need to have people be able to access the materials and be able to give input.
It's a sensitive subject.
No, thank you for doing that.
I hope I was able to answer that.
No, you provided a lot of background, I just, I, you know, I know folks will need to understand the levee issue and the, the expense of pushing that out.
And the feasibility of it.
Right.
What we were led to believe is that was not a feasible option.
Jason, if I may just.
Yeah, please.
But just to further explain why it's not feasible to maintain that Second Street connection the way it is today, currently, the Second Street is accessed off of Third Street, there's that right turn that you make and go around underneath the existing viaduct structure. So that goes to the top deck of the existing I Street Bridge, which is about 23 feet further in, or higher in elevation than this new bridge will be. So as we shift that new bridge up to where that C Street alignment is, the, the deck elevation comes down 23 feet, which would require you to go down 23 feet to maintain that clearance, and that's where Jason said you start to get into that levee prism, which is unfortunately a nonstarter with Central Valley Flood Protection Board and Army Corps.
And so on this, so did you also evaluate acquiring the properties on, on Second Street instead of the through properties?
So, we can't assume in the environmental document that we would be acquiring all the properties or not, because acquisition of properties isn't an environmental impact. It's a financial and it's a real estate impact, but we don't go into the acquisition or potential acquisition until after this process. We have discussed it and what would be a path forward, and we discussed it a little bit with Federal Highways and, you know, how this process is going to unfold, but it's not discussed or analyzed in the.
I'm asking about the acquisition process, it's that you, that in order to preserve access to the properties on Second Street, you are, the plans presume that there will be properties affected between Second Street and Third Street. So what my question was, did you alternatively model having the effect be on the Second Street properties? So, I mean, for that, so that connection between Second and Third Street requires the removal of these structures, did you model or consider an alternative of removing the structures that this whole, this whole element is intended to serve?
No, I can tell you, we, we worked with community development to look at other roadway configurations and access options like a cul-de-sac. Instead of going through the rail yards, we looked at probably about six or seven different options, coming from, trying to attempt to come from B Street, come in another direction. This was the least impactful while still providing.
So you, what you're describing is you looked at a lot of ways to provide connection to these properties. My question is, did you model instead having those be the properties that were assumed to be, to go away?
And not have to build a road.
And not the properties that the new universal street would be built through.
No, we didn't look at that.
And why is that?
To my knowledge.
So, we did actually look at that, we had a week-long VA study, value analysis study, and most of that study focused on this area of the project because it is so constrained. The way it's identified in the environmental document is we had to disclose that there's potentially acquisitions needed on those properties. So the acquisitions are identified for all of those properties, whether it's a full acquisition or a partial acquisition, the disclosure in the environmental document is that there would be a need for acquisitions. We had to describe one alternative. As we get into working through the acquisition process, as Jason mentioned, we will be having those specific discussions, so that could be something that comes out of the acquisition process, rather than building a road to provide that access. There could be an economic decision that's made to look at relocations as opposed to building that road, but that's something that occurs in this next phase of the project.
Okay, so with respect to this, the plan is not a, this is not a, our actions tonight will not be a set-in-stone determination about, that is not in some way modifiable.
That's correct.
Based on what you just.
I guess, sorry. So that's the, the important word preliminary plans, makes it very important, okay.
I apologize, I just wasn't understanding a question, but these are 35% plans, so these are modifiable.
Oh, sorry, yes, and I just wanted to say that in your presentation, I don't know which slide it was, but there was a reference to the SEQA guidelines, and in support of approval of the project, you, you had adopted, you know, the attached findings in fact, and the statement of overriding considerations, which I, you know, agree with at this point as the reason we need to, you know, move forward and approve this.
Great, thank you.
All right, then, if there's no further debate or discussion, is there a motion on the item?
So moved, second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, turning down that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, council calendar, Ms. Berlin.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Coming up at the end of the month, we have the Farm to Park Dinner, and that's at the Bridgeway Lake Boathouse, and that starts at 5 o'clock, and that's on August 24th, and that's Saturday, and that's all.
All right, any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
No reports, no, thank you.
City attorney report?
Any reports?
Staff director of members of the council?
Just have a.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, I have a request for a proclamation. I don't know if this is the time to bring it up.
So our protocols are for, if it's a policy or related proclamation, it would go under a future agenda request?
Future agenda, okay.
Which is supposed to be provided in writing, included in the agenda packet? So the members of the council have the opportunity to see the request before they are made?
Okay, so it should be included in the next.
Okay, so I apologize, I didn't understand that as part of the process, so I gave inaccurate information to Councilmember Guerrero last week, so.
Somebody ask that city clerk?
Yeah, so the future agenda item requests are required under council's protocol to be, to be submitted, the city clerk simply attaches it right after this tab in the agenda.
Okay.
So that over the weekend, council members can see what the, what the thing is that is coming.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so we'll work on that request for the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, great. All right, then, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
We move aye, Councilmember Sandin, and seconded by Councilmember Guerrero, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, turning down, that motion carries, the meeting is adjourned.